I see the town website for the dates and the times. The last day to register to vote is Saturday, October 26th. The Senior Center will offer a presentation on dementia. That's with dementia friends, as well as a memory screening. Session by Tree Valley Elder Services. That is on Thursday, October 3rd at 1:00 P. M. Dudley Charlton Town takeover and their railers. That is a Saturday, November 23rd at 6:00 or 5:00 P. M. Dudley Elementary Chorus performing America, the beautiful city town of Charlton. Facebook page for more information. If you experience any damage to your vehicle from the construction on Route 20, the process to file a claim is to notify the Mass DOT's claim office. You do that by following the directions on the website. The website is listed on our website as well?
Yes, we'll make that.
Yeah, the claims office will direct the claim to a mass dot contractor if the claim is within an active construction project. That's all I got.
Okay, Bosh, any other announcements for the board? Anybody for the community forum? All right, hearing none. I don't believe we have any appointments or reservations.
That's an act.
No, perfect. Let's hop down to 6-1. One of my favorite things of the year, set trick or treat date and time.
All right, it's that time of year when the board is asked to set the date and time for trick or treating. Halloween is on Thursday, October 31st, 2024. Last year, the board voted to, voted the hours to be 5:00 P. M. to 7:30 P. M. Chief Dowd approves as well, but we leave the time and date up to the board. I'd also like to invite the members to join on October 31st at 11:00 P. M. When the children from the library come over to Town Hall in costumes and trick or treat here at Town Hall. Employees do their best and this, to make this a fun event for the kids and dress up and pass out candy. This year, we're doing a memes theme, but I would ask the board to consider closing Town Hall at 4:30 just to allow the boys to get home and do trick or treat, their kids during trick or treating hours.
Let's take the time first. Anyone have any concerns with the 5:00 to 7:30? Do you have a motion? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Here with Bosh, discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor now?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Next up, about closing Town Hall early so that the folks can go hang out with their kids. Anyone have any concerns?
Nope.
Can I hear a motion? I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bosh, and then discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous. Let's jump down to 6-2, the special alcoholic beverage license.
All right, attaches an application submitted by Dennis Lattell on behalf of St. Joseph's Knights of Columbus Council 11379 for a special alcoholic beverage license for wine and malt beverage to be used on October 19th, 2024 from 6:00 P. M. to 9:00 P. M. At St. Joseph's Church Hall for the night at the races. The application was forwarded to the police chief, building commissioner, and fire department, and all have approved per the board's policy. If a special alcoholic beverage license is approved, the dates on the license should be the day for the event, before the event to allow the alcohol to be delivered, the day of the event, and the day after the event to allow any alcohol left. Over to me, thank you. I recommend a motion, this will be packed.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion? If not, could someone read the motion?
I move to approve the special alcoholic beverages license for wine and malt beverages as submitted by Dennis Lattell on behalf of St. Joseph's Knights of Columbus Council 11379 for the night at the races with the dates on the license to be October 18th, 2024 until October 20th, 2024.
Thank you, Bosh, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous. Good luck to that. Andrew, do we have anything other old business?
I have no old business.
Let's jump down to 8, please. The BOS policy review disposition.
All right, attaches a policy on your consideration under Chapter 30, the disposition of property. Essentially states that any surplus equipment or equipment valued at less than $10,000 should be disposed of per policy of the town. Currently, we do not have a policy. We typically use best practice, so draft a policy so that way we could actually have something in place for this.
Any questions on the board on that? Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Would anyone want to entertain a motion to accept? I have the motion. David, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Kamasi, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous. Thank you very much on that. Always nice to get policies from the board. Still good for a long time. Andrew, talk to me about the TA report.
All right, so with permitting, we have annual permit renewals that are going to be sent out soon to businesses. This year, we're going to be rolling out our online permitting platform, Remedize. Businesses that have conducted business through the planning or through the Board of Health and Building Department should have some experience in working with the platform, so a lot of our applicants should be familiar with it. We are going to do a little bit of a hybrid format because the ABCC licenses, they'll have some quirks to them that we'll have to work out, but those will be going out soon, so if you have a permit with us, be on the lookout. Highlight that Charlton Fire Department is going to be hosting a BLS provider, CPR AED class for healthcare providers class on Friday, October 18th, at Charlton Public Library. If you're interested, please contact the department order to register. Want to offer congratulations to the Charlton Police Department on being awarded a $30,000 grant for an opposite grants research for their municipal road safety programs. So good job on the department on getting that. And community electricity aggregation. So the new supply contract for, under the aggregation program, is scheduled to begin in December with Direct Energy. And anybody who's a subscriber, it's appropriate, they'll actually see a reduction in their rate compared to what it currently is. So right now, the rate is 15 cents per kilowatt hour. That's going to drop down to 13 cents per kilowatt hour. We do have information on the website, so the old information within the next month will be put up with new information, but see any changes in your bill, we'll have the contact information there for anybody to contact with questions.
Existing participants, they don't have to reapply or anything?
No, they should automatically get rolled into the next program.
Can we do some, a little bit better job of advertising that? There's a lot of people that either don't know about it or are not enrolled. Because I looked into it last year when we had that.
Of course.
That's a big change.
All right, let's hop down to, I'm sorry, do you want to?
That's awesome.
It's going on other business. I have one, but let me defer to the wishes of the board. If there's anything else that we didn't start to bring up, we'll put in queue. The only one I have, and you're pregnant in Charleston, you have to help us with this. The all-hands meeting, I'm sorry, the all-board meeting?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so we want to start planning that. Maybe, maybe work with Pete in just, I'm assuming early November, if we can.
There was, there was an appointment about that last year, to invite not just the boards but also the communities, you know, all of them. Just forward, you know, it's like like.
Of both elected and.
And, and, yeah. Can you do that, can we?
Of course. The more, the better. Mary, see what you did there?
They already are. Everybody's invited and they just don't.
Always appointed and.
Yeah, I don't get a lot of responses.
Okay, but we have to keep trying.
Yeah, we'll keep doing it.
Well, the Boston Post Kane Committee better show up this time.
Absolutely.
I need some updates.
Only if you find a cane.
Still hoping. All right, we have five minutes. What else we have going on?
I do have one thing, if that's okay.
Always Mary.
We were notified the fire department is selling breast cancer T-shirts. Right?
Correct.
So we're going to get some in the office tomorrow so people can stop in the office or they can contact the fire departments to get a T-shirt.
And Chief, you have that up on your fire department webpage, right?
Yeah, it's, it's actually through the local.
Yep.
If you go on IAFF Local 4023.
Okay, can that be posted on our website and?
I think that's on my program.
I have no idea.
So questions, reach out to the chief, reach out to Mary. Thank you for that, Mary. What else we have going on? We're too fast for real good, we have four minutes. I can only be so entertaining.
Can we go over the next meeting?
Sure, next meeting announcements. This is actually pretty important. So our next meeting is going to be October 15th, which is the week before our special town meeting. We're going to have our usual pre-meeting at 6:30 over at Charlton Middle School, but most importantly, our normal special town meeting is October 21st at 7:00 P. M. At Charlton Middle School. As a reminder, we only call it a special town meeting because technically speaking, in the bylaws, we have an annual town meeting. If we get any other town meeting that's not part of that, it's called a special town meeting. And we're going to go over free cash, we're going to go over a bunch of different things, some zoning changes, and we're going to talk about the warrant tonight. So last time, I remember there was a bit of a wait to get in, to make Norrines like a little bit easier, if everyone could show up a little bit early, and hopefully we start right at 7:00 P. M. and hopefully get us out of there at a respectable hour. Yeah, for those watching at home, if you haven't been in a while, it's completely different. We have the electronic voting. A, it's obviously anonymous, but B, it's a lot more quicker. So even on longer nights are much shorter than what the old normal meetings used to be. So again, October 21st, 7:00 P. M., Charlton Middle. And we still have three minutes.
And we had the raffle basket last time.
Oh, that's right, yes. Boy, we're.
To give people.
Boy, we're just really trying to stall this. David, you want to say something?
I got nothing.
Oh, just a reminder, if you are interested in running for selectmen in May, is to give full-size candy bars. You're not technically buying votes, but I'm just saying it's worked in the past. Don't ask me how. All right, 6:43. The next thing up, actually. You guys good?
We're ready anytime you are.
All right, I'll go.
All right, yeah, yeah, read slowly.
All right, we have a 6:45 appointment, a joint appointment with the planning board to fill an open position until May 2025, annual town election. With the passing of Gene Vincent, the planning board has an open seat to fill. They are recommending the appointment of Robert Behringer to fill the open position until May 2025, annual town election. Vote must be done jointly by majority of both boards and by roll call vote.
Would you like us to sit up there or can we sit in the jury box right where we are? Whatever, you're welcome. You guys, I'm sorry, I don't even know whose chair right now.
I'm the chair.
Oh, don't, all right, yeah. Can you just open your meeting?
Sure, sure. So I'd like to open the planning board meeting for October 1st, special planning board meeting, joint meeting with the select board to appoint a member to the board. As you said, we're one short right now. We've had a couple of volunteers, we picked a great candidate, and we look forward to having him on the board. So if I could have a motion to appoint Bob Behringer to the planning board?
Make a motion to appoint Bob Behringer to the planning board?
I second that motion.
Motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Oh, you're going to do a roll call.
Betsy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Don Clay?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Welcome, Bob.
Oh, Bob, welcome to the show. We just have to do our vote real quick. David?
Aye.
Bosh?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Behringer, welcome, and thank you so much for volunteering. I think you're going to find your colleagues to be very friendly.
Anything else about a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting?
Remove.
Motion of second?
Second.
All those in favor? See you guys, close.
See you, Mr. Behringer. We'll see you soon.
Welcome, Steve.
Kurt, you got something?
You don't have a week. When you get done with them, then I'm going to ask permission.
Oh, yeah, I think we're done.
Yeah.
Done, you good?
I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I was confused about the location of your meeting, and I meant to come to the open forum to make a major announcement for the town of Charlton.
You know what, Kurt, the floor is yours.
I signed a certificate of occupancy for Amazon a week and a half ago. Moving forward to get into operation and hope to be in full operation sometime mid to late October.
Oh, that's fast. Well, that's great. Kurt, speaking personally, I know how much work that you put in up there and along with the planning board, obviously, the amount of just construction that's going on up there and the fact that it's gone this quickly. I just want to commend you, the planning board, zoning, really everyone on this side of the house. Like, they're doing a fantastic job.
All sorts of hours. Lot of departments probably did more inspections there than they did in the last. It's everybody. It was a town-wide event, so, yeah.
So on behalf of my other compadres in the town of Charlton, we thank you for that. It was, for me, a once-in-a-lifetime project, probably a once-in-a-townwide project for the town of Charlton. And we look forward to being introduced to their management up there, which those introductions are coming, and a long, continuous fruitful relationship with them.
Well done.
So thank you.
No, Kurt, thank you, appreciate it.
We have had many compliments, but we went to tour the building. They could not say anything more and better. All the superlatives for, for all of you guys, especially Kurt. So I don't know, maybe that means they're coming to build something else.
Bite your tongue. I've got three minutes before the 61. Chief Dowd, I know you guys took a tour of the Amazon piece and that you seemed to be pretty impressed with it as well. I feel pretty comfortable from a police aspect?
Oh, absolutely, it's nice, it's a beautiful building.
Chief, I know you've been up there like way too much, so.
He hates elevators.
Are you the one that?
That's right, I hate roadblocks.
Are you the one that got stuck in the door?
I think we're close enough to at least start reading. So we're onto our 6:50 appointment.
All right.
Mr. Moss?
6:50, a request to remove from Chapter 61, El Turner Road and Old Worcester Road. Attaches request from Nate Benjamin Jr., managing member of Charlton Orchards Group LLC, 44 Old Worcester Road, requesting to remove from Chapter 61, parcel 36C-10, as shown on assessor's map, vacant lot, 60,000 square feet, 36-C-10.2, and a small farmhouse and five acres, 36-C-10.3. The Planning Board, Board of Assessors, Conservation Commission, and Water Sewer Commission have all reviewed the request and have no objection to the town of Charlton choosing not to exercise their right of first refusal for this request. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the attached public hearing notice. I would recommend the board approve the request.
Thank you, Andrew. Public hearing notice, rescheduled from September 24th, 2024. Please be advised that the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 1st, 2024, at 6:50 P. M. at the Charlton Town Hall, Senior Center, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass., 01507, and via Zoom. To act on request by Nate Benjamin Jr., managing member of Charlton Orchards Group LLC, 44 Old Worcester Road, Charlton, Mass., 01507, to remove from Chapter 61, parcel 36C-10, as shown on the assessor's map, vacant lot, 60,000 square feet, 36-C-10.2, and a small farmhouse and five acres, 36-C-10.3. Anyone interested should appear at the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing. With that, the public hearing is officially open. Anybody have any concerns in the audience? Let me start there. All right, that being said, can I entertain a motion to close the public hearing? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Steve. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous, but now if we could have a, I have a motion from David not to exercise, all right. Do I have a second for this?
Second.
Second for Bosh, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all is in favor? Opposed, that is unanimous. So that is now taken out of Chapter 61 and is now officially a bill of emergency. All right, anyway, stuff ten minutes. You know what, let's take a five-minute break. Drew, we'll take a five-minute break. Regardless, we are here to talk around the warrant as a reminder. I'll say Monday, October 21st, 7:00 P. M. I'm not sure who's chairing you guys now, is it still you? Do you want to open up your meeting?
So I'll, I'll open up the meeting at 7:00 o'clock. We will skip agenda number two, we'll do a little bit later, and we'll start with review of the special town meeting warrant files.
Okay, Mr. Moss. First up is Article 1. These are just appropriation of funds for unpaid bills of a prior year. We're talking maybe $2,000 total for like three distinct items. Anyone on the Board of Selectmen have a concern? Can I have a motion for the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is, that's unanimous, Mr. Kamasi.
I'll entertain a motion to approve, to support Article 1, as written. A motion, I have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is prepared to say yes?
Yes.
Next up, Article 2 is our standard inter-intra-departmental transfers, often taken out of free cash and/or raise appropriate. This year, we're taking $150,000 in free cash and funding OPEC. This continues to be one of my favorite things that we do because most towns do not do this, and a day of reckoning is coming at for them at some point. Couple other, three items to be exact. To raise appropriate $84,000 for dispatcher and a police officer, $26,000 for the group health insurance, obviously that goes up, but also for the police officer, and $500,000 for the fund stabilization. Again, that's for raise inappropriate. So anyone have any questions, concerns? I know, Andrew, someone's going to ask, just for the benefit of those at home, the police wages?
Yeah, so that is actually both combined with, or for the dispatcher and a police officer. Those are two different positions. The dispatcher would essentially be funded from November 1st to the end of the fiscal year. The police officer from the beginning of the calendar year to the end of the fiscal year. The chiefs are here to talk about the dispatch need. Both of these kind of tailor into, into that need where one is essentially to bring the staffing up to, for the dispatchers so that way they can run two-per-shift, and the police officer is both to help with some of the patrol needs but also fill in on dispatch to maintain that two-per-shift.
And dispatching is a very underserved and under-recognized group, and I'm glad to see that we are moving that direction. Does anyone from, what is that going to, questions for the chiefs?
So that, so there's, for the dispatcher, that's a full-time, not per diem? It's a full-time decision?
Full-time.
Full-time, good. Good.
Any other questions for the chiefs? Hearing none, I have a motion to recommend from David for our board. Do I have a second for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous, Mr. Kamasi.
I'll entertain a motion for a recommendation of Article 2 as presented. Do I have a motion? I have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor to say yes?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Next up, Article 3, amendments to the budget. We don't have any, so that means that we did a nice job. And the motion is actually going to be to pass over the article, which definitely, which means we're just not going to vote on it. David? So, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is, that's unanimous, Mr. Moss.
Motion to recommend, motion one is presented in Article 3. Motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor to say yes? Opposed, no, unanimous.
Article 4 is where we're doing miscellaneous capital items. Specifically, we started breaking these out from free cash into multiple motions within one singular article to make things a little bit easier for people to vote on and comprehend, and not necessarily have to vote in totality on 20 different things. Now it's breaking it up. The first set is, again, these are all coming from free cash. $200,000 to repair a little-known gem in town, the number-two schoolhouse structural, the number-two schoolhouse for some structural repairs. We also have some grants regarding that. $250,000 for the townwide radio system. $50,000 for overall town hall improvements. $80,000 for tech replacement improvements. $10,000 for library generator design plans, and $50,000 for the library for the fire pond, cistern pipe, and screen replacement of part two. Anyone have any questions on this, Ashley, Andrew?
Part of that that I would recommend, I would motion to recommend, motions run through for.
Oh, all right, let me go through this, if that's all right.
There are four motions.
Actually works a little. So motion two then, thank you. Do you guys mind if I go through?
We'll do the same thing.
Next up, as David mentioned, the second motion within the article is going to be for our police. We're going to replace three cruises this year, $255,000, and also our firearms need to get updated for $30,000, again, coming from free cash. Third motion is for the fire EMS, for the fire station alerting system, Station 1, $75,000 coming from free cash. And last but not least, we have DPW and sewer. Let me take the first four, these are all DPW-related. $300,000, which I know seems like a lot, but that's the going rate for a street sweeper nowadays. $30,000 to replace and repair the salt shed roof. $17.5 for a tractor replacement, and $60,000 for the F-250 pickup truck. Again, that's all coming from free cash. Now, for the sewer enterprise, there are $50,000 from the retained earnings for the North Main Street pump station, and also $500,000 from return earnings to the Planthead Works project. And that is Article 4 in a nutshell. I fully support every single one of these. I have a motion from David to recommend the Board of Selectmen support all four motions within Article 4. Do I have a second for discussion?
I have a second.
Any discussion on any of these items? Hearing none, all is in favor? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous, we are all sent in Article 4, Mr. Kamasi.
I'll entertain a motion that we do what Bill just said. Second, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor to say yes? Say no? It's unanimous.
Next up, this is for, again, it's always strange when we say things like, this is for the fire department. This is not for the fire department, this is for the town. We want to borrow $850,000, again, within the legal limit, this is not a disclusion. Again, this is more of a financing aspect of it, for the purpose of replacing Engine 2. These things have a definitive lifetime. Once they hit a certain point, there are recommendations, you don't use them at all, type of thing. This is one of those, this is for me, this is for you, this is for every single person in town. Fully recommend this, and again, this will be Article 5. David?
Motion to recommend with a typo correction in the motion, it says Engine 1 to replace. So is it Engine 1 or Engine?
Sorry, it's Engine 2.
So we can just, motion to recommend with the change in the motion to read Engine 2.
Copy paste.
I have a second.
Thank you, any, I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous, Mr. Kamasi.
I'll entertain a motion that we recommend approval of Article 5 as presented. Motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor to say yes? Say no, unanimous.
Number 6, this is transfer to and from stabilization. More importantly, this is transferring to stabilization from free cash. $700,000, this is for our overall reserve policy, which we always want to have at least 10% in there, and we continue to do a great job on that. Let's never deviate from that. I have a motion to recommend from David, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Bash, any discussion?
Only question, only if you know it offhand, do you know where we'll be after the 7:00 PM?
12% in general stabilization, plus we'll have cap.
Right, I think, was it 13 and a half, I think, total?
Yeah.
Because they count both.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second.
So 13 and a half percent, is it?
Of our operating.